I now call this meeting to order on Tuesday, the 17th of April at 6:30 PM. If you can all please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Casella. Commissioner McCray, if you can please give us the invocation.
Let us bow to the creed and make up all mankind. We come this afternoon in the humblest manner that we know how. As we partake in doing the business for this great city, we ask that you look over us, bless us, and keep us. But most of all, as our Vice Mayor deliberate on her first service, please help her to guide her and most of all calm her down, let her know everything is going to be alright. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Commissioner McCray for that invocation. I usually do tend to do things fast, so I'll try to slow it down tonight. Thank you, Commissioner. We will start with roll call, please.
Mayor Stephen Lee Fran is absent. Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
And Commissioner Joe Casella.
Here.
My quorum is present.
Thank you. Judy, if I can have, for agenda approval, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? I believe we have a couple of changes that need to be done this evening. We're taking some things off. Jim or Lori, if you could walk us through that, please.
Yeah, I've got, if you could table Public Hearing A, which is Proposed Ordinance 18005. That's regarding telecommunications and the public rights of way. Eight B, which is a major site plan modification for lot 52.
It has to be removed.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, let me just help our Vice Mayor, you know, table this. Motion to table the orders that you just read to us. Eight A, so we won't have to come back to it. I motion to table it. We need a second.
Second.
For both.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I believe that's a silent vote. We'll take their silence as yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And also 12A, which is the mayor's request for an update on opioid and gun lawsuits. To please table to the next commission meeting.
Motion to table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And we're removing eight B from the agenda, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I get a motion for that as well?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We have, we received a phone call from Representative Jaquet and Senator Powell that neither one of them are going to be able to make it tonight. One's sick and one has a conflict, so we want to, we're going to move that to May, just as a matter of information for you.
Thank you. They will be present in our meeting. So again, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to informational items by members of the commission. I will start with Commissioner Justin Katz and we'll move down from there.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I have no disclosure, but I want to say that last night I was at an INCA meeting at the Old Schoolhouse Children's Museum, and I was very impressed by Officer Koch, K-O-C-H, a 10-year veteran. The reason I really wanted to attend was that I was hearing a lot from members in District Two that lives on the intercoastal about boats and what can we do about it. I hate to tell them, and I, you know, I talked to our attorney, there's really nothing that we can really do because it's state waters. I was hoping that Representative Jaquet and Powell was here because we have to get rules changed in the state legislature in order to do something. But that was one of the things that I was impressed with because I learned a lot just by attending, and if the chief, Assistant Chief could relay that message to him, I wanted to tell him personally, thank you, job well done. Also, since I see the Public Works Director here tonight, David, I'm not going to mess up your last name, I just want to say that I was impressed. I watched a guy pick up trash in my District Two, and I'm always saying about, you know, let's do a better job. This guy, I seen him get off the truck with a rake and rake the pile up and pick up what was left. And I said, ah, that was a shopping cart that has been in the district. This man owned this man's property a couple yards back for over eight days. And I told him, I said, if I push that cart down here, would you pick it up? And he told me, no, I'm going to back up and go and get it. I'm saying that to say this, I don't know if you all have accommodations or if you all recognize employees for the month or the quarter. If you don't, you probably need to start one. And I'm only saying that because I like to nominate this guy because I was absolutely impressed. You know, once we start nominating individuals, we're going beyond the call of duty, that would make everybody else, I feel, that works here for this city to get a little bit more concerned and say, wow, somebody's really watching us. Just want to say thank you. That's it for me.
Can you mention the name of the person who you're talking about again?
I think his name is Al. I didn't get nosy. I didn't need to know his name. I just know that he was a guy. I seen David. I pointed him out, and they went around the corner and found him, and they relayed the message. But I didn't get nosy because I'm just saying, they said that we're not supposed to come in contact with employees, but sometime I step out of bounds and say, you know, can you do a favor for me? So that's where I'm going to leave it. But his name was Al.
Well, congratulations to Al for the nomination made by Commissioner McCray. Thank you, Al, for your service to our city and to our residents. Commissioner Casella?
Yeah, no disclosures, Vice Mayor, but I would just like to make a little announcement. Tomorrow at 5:00 PM, we're going to be rededicating our dog park to Officer Joe Crowder, who passed away unexpectedly. Officer Crowder, I believe, was a 12-year veteran of the Boynton Police Officer. He meanted a lot of good and bad people through his career. He also was the K-9 officer with DAX. And tomorrow, we will have an unveiling of a bronze statue and renaming the dog park Joe Crowder Park. So if you can attend, it'd be a real tribute to our Boynton Police Department. Thank you.
Looking forward to that event. And for myself, not very much to disclose, just a few events that I took place in. So this past Saturday, we held a food giveaway over at Sarah Sims Park, where we passed out food to over 200 families in the area. Just an opportunity to say hello to our residents and really just allow for no families in Boynton Beach to go hungry. This was in partnership with E Roadmap Corporation, a 501(c)(3) operating here in our South Florida area. So with that, that is all I have. Thank you all for sharing your disclosures.
Before you move on, Vice Mayor, I'd like to say also on Thursday afternoon at 5:00 at Troy's Barbecue, Dr. Deborah Robinson will be holding her kickoff fundraiser for school board, and I'd just like to just put a plug in, although I won't be there, so nobody cannot say that you didn't know about it. I'm just saying step, I'm just saying smile. Okay, she's running again. That's all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, may I put a plug in also?
Absolutely. I was going to put it in for you if you didn't. Go ahead. Go for it, Joe.
Well, thank you. On that same note, I also will be having a fundraiser Thursday night over at the Copper Point Brewery. They're having a one-time release special called "The Commissioner Beer." So come on over. As you probably know, I'm going to be resigning this position in the near future, and I am candidate for the House District 90, Lori Berman's currently open seat. So if you can make it by, stop by, have a couple beers with us, and we'll share a few laughs. Thank you.
It's called the Commish, right?
The Commish.
The Commish. Not a big beer drinker. I know our resident connoisseur beer drinker here is.
Leave him alone.
But I would like to try that beer, so looking forward to that. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, moving on to announcements and special events. I'd like to announce that Boynton Beach Utilities will be hosting a water conservation workshop for the public on Wednesday, April 25th, at 5:30 to 7:00 PM here at Intercoastal Park at 2240 North Federal Highway. This is a water conservation workshop, and that will be led by Rebecca Harvey, I believe. We also have an announcement by Mary DeGraffin-Rite. If she could come down, work her way down, our Events and Program Manager for the Concert on the Green event.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mary DeGraffin-Rite, Events and Program Manager. If you like the scenic beauty of nature, the sound of good music, and family-friendly games and activities, then this event is for you. On Saturday, April 21st, the Recreation and Parks Department will host the Second Annual Concert on the Green Event at the beautiful links of Boynton Beach from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. To celebrate Earth Day, the following vendors will be on site. Sea Turtle Adventures, Healthy Aquatics Marine Institute, Native Plant Society, Laxahatchee Wildlife Refugee, Utilities Department Water Conservation, and Gumbo Lumbo. The Club Scouts of Boynton Beach will collect recycling throughout the event. Families will also have the opportunity to enjoy nature tours throughout the beautiful scenic golf course. The Schoolhouse Museum staff will oversee arts and crafts. Crazy Games will be on site to provide a variety of active games that will promote health and fitness. Food and beverages will also be sold. Recreation staff will transport patrons who require assistance from the parking lot to the golf course. And get ready, because at 4:00, L-Trib Band will rock the golf course with a variety of R&B, rock, funk, hip-hop, reggae, Latin, blues, and more. American Sign Language interpreters will also be on site during the concert. Thank you so much, and as always, I look forward to seeing you there.
Mr. Graffin-Rite, before you leave, I think you need to make an announcement. This is one of those events where you bring your chairs, bring your blankets. I'm just saying, we don't be providing like chairs and blankets so that you can be comfortable.
Well, yes, sir. Bring your blankets, bring your chairs, take your shoes off on the beautiful green, and be ready to dance and have a good time. So it's at your leisure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that lively announcement, Mr. Graffin-Rite. Always such a pleasure to have her come up to the podium.
I see our golf program tapper like shaking a little bit up there with all these people walking on his brand-new greens, but that's okay, Ron.
Thank you, Ron, for all the work you're doing down there. And lastly, we have a proclamation to proclaim April 28th as Arbor Day. If there's anyone here to receive it, please come down.
Our own.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraskan Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they may be planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Christina Romulus, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the great city of Boynton Beach, hereby proclaim April 27th or 28th.
We actually celebrate on April.
Oh, okay.
Another day.
One of those days, as Arbor Day in the great city of Boynton Beach, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Glenda Hall, Forestry and Grounds Manager. We celebrated actually Arbor Day on April 12th at Barrier Free Park. We planted 15 slash pines, one live oak, and one Royal Poinciana tree with St. Joe's eighth-grade students. There was 15 students, and we had a great time. Mayor Grant was with us for the entire event. And this was our 35th year of plant, having an Arbor Day. Arbor Day celebrations and the proclamation are critical to becoming Tree City, USA. And every year, we get a hat. So I have a hat. I've been collecting them.
Thank you.
For you, Tree City, USA. And I have one. But thank you, and hopefully this will continue forward. Maybe next year, you'll have 36 years. Thank you.
Moving on to public audience, individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. In addition, as these are currently my chambers, I ask that individuals, please respect, the sanctity of the deus here. Do not embark upon personal attacks of commissioners. If you are addressing us, please address us as a body. Otherwise, you may be asked to be removed from the chamber, so please respect the deus up here. Thank you.
Good evening. Minister Bernard Wright, 713 Northwest Second Street, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, Real Talk Radio, and the Robert D. Wells Foundation. Y'all will give me if I don't go over three minutes. This is to commend someone. I think he's going to retire, Mr. Livergood, and I want to commend him. I have a certificate here from Minister Bernard Wright of Bernard Wright Ministries in the heart of Boynton neighborhood extends this certificate in good faith for your gracious services on this day, the 17th of April, 2018. And it has good speed, a typographical area for God's speed. So listen, listen now, I'm telling my wife, I say, we got to go back, baby. I say, say good speed, it's supposed to be God's speed. And so I said, let me research good speed. It had to come from God's speed, so the derivative of God's speed, which mean well wishes and prosperity on your journey. But my wife said, no, that fits him. Livergood, good speed. He said, because in these years that you call him, he be fast, baby, getting things done. To God be the... You leave a message on his machine, and guess what? The limbs getting cut, the restrooms being cleaned. We finally get the restroom with cold water at Sarah Sims, and, you know, drainage and the lights, and, I mean, you know, on and on and on. To God be the glory. And so he said, you're the only one work for the city, but ain't on the payroll. But at any rate, I just want to commend him tonight. To God be the glory. He's worthy. I trust that whoever takes your position will know that I mean no harm. I come by way of no harm. And listen, the people love it, getting things done, you know what I mean? And hey, man, they was cutting them limbs down. I just left it on your machine yesterday, Friday. To God be the glory. And so I just want to extend this, and God bless all of you, all things well. Now y'all give me y'all prayers because I'm going to do a video, going to be pay-per-view. I'm going to put us on the map out in Vegas coming May the 12th. And Boynton going to go on the map, to God be the glory. Give my vision out there while I'm out there too, so keep me in your prayers. I've been, I haven't been there in a great some time, some decades now since I've been to Vegas, it's been in connection. But anyway, God bless all of you, and things are still moving, and I'm still believing in a prophetic better Boynton. God bless you. Mr. Livergood, I feel like presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Charles Cantor, K-A-N-T-E-R, 2905 South Green Leaf Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. Boy, it's so nice to see everybody in such a happy mood tonight. It's really great. I love it. And I want to be in the happy mood too, and based on what's on tonight's agenda, we are going to be welcoming you into our District Four community. You are going to be renting some temporary material, space in our quantum area, quantum development. Now, that's just wonderful. We want you to enjoy all of the amenities that we have there, which are multitudinous, some of the best restaurants in town, some of the nicest facilities. There's only one little problem that we're here with. Last week, you all got a memo from me concerning some speed bumps that we need on Quantum Boulevard. Now, this has been an age-old problem. Back in 2004, when I first moved in here, there were cows right over there, whereas now Renaissance and all those beautiful developments. Now, obviously, it's not. And what has happened is the enormous amount of traffic backs up, and they've discovered Quantum Boulevard as a shortcut. If you're going westbound on Gateway and you need to go northbound on Congress, you take Quantum Boulevard and zip through with no traffic lights, it's a little bit longer, yes, but it's a nice ride where you can put the pedal to the metal, unfortunately for us. And I've got, in our community, Parkside, we have 271 fee simple private property units. That's approximately 500 voters, probably 700 cars. But we really would like to push this point. I would expect that the engineers in the city would tell us better exactly where those bumps should be and exactly the best way to outline the crosswalks, because it's getting dangerous now. It's not so much volume of traffic, it's high speed of traffic. There's no impediments, so everybody loves it. They think they're in the country, zoom, 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 you know? You would have exactly the same problem on Renaissance Boulevard if you did not have the speed bumps there. Now, we're only asking for parity with Renaissance. We're not asking for anything more or less, just parity. We have a group that are starting to organize. Hopefully, I can shut them down, but I'm sure that we can come to working arrangements with the city. Since the city took over the roads, we have no choice but to come here. Thank you very, very much, and give up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. And if staff could possibly put together some type of report to send to the commission regarding what Mr. Cantor is talking about, I'd like to see that in the near future. Yes? Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff's already taken a look at it. We'll do that.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Sorry, I don't feel good, so this will be a little less exciting than normal. I did want to remind everyone, Earth Day is coming up, so you have some great readings on some solutions and some ways to move forward as a city from Florida trend. You also have a story from the Palm Beach Post regarding disposable items that are made out of sugarcane. I don't know if you guys saw that in the paper a couple weeks ago. Thought it was quite interesting. I know my students enjoyed reading it. And then there's a couple pages with some great little things on, that are going on worldwide to help make the planet better. I did also want to say, I'm not feeling well today and lying around on the couch. I got a chance to watch a lot of news, and the city of West Palm is planting 10,000 trees in 10 years, and they are having their green market this week and their last one for the season, and they are giving away free trees, and I'm wondering why we're not doing something similar. Because you know me, I'm all about the trees, and it's, I think I've done enough planting 16,000-plus trees around the world. I think it's time we really need to be focusing on Boynton, and that is one of the biggest complaints I hear in my neighborhood from my neighbors, is we just do not have enough trees. And I've said it before, and I'm, you know, it's almost Earth Day, so I'm saying it again. We desperately need more trees, especially on our major arterial roads in the city. There's just no reason. We are not as beautiful as Boca. We are an older city than Boca. We're one of the old, original cities in this county, and we should have big, beautiful trees in our city that show our age, not Boca, which is one of the new cities that, you know, is covered in big, beautiful trees, and we have very, very few, including the Cape Pocket, I, it appears we're going to be getting rid of with the town square. And Colin, you've got to fight on your hands over that one. And I wanted to finish up, last but not least. Jeff, it's been a true pleasure, so good luck.
Zan Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. I have two updates for you this evening. One week from this evening, the 24th of April, from midnight to midnight, Palm Beach and Martin Counties Great Give will be taking place. This 24-hour online giving event is led, is to raise funds for nonprofits throughout the community, and several of the nonprofits in our own community will be participating, including Habitat for Humanity of South Palm Beach, Connect Greatness, East Boynton Little League, Eat Better, Live Better, Faith for our Ministries, Feeding Palm Beach County, Gold Coast Down Syndrome, Health Aquatics Marine Institute, Maplewood Playhouse, and it goes on and on and on and on. There are many more. So I request that you all get involved in the Great Give, be it supporting the Schoolhouse Children's Museum or one of the other wonderful organizations in this community, and that's next week, one week from today, April 24th. Also, in addition, in two and a half weeks, on Saturday, May 5th, the museum will host its 2018 Princess and Superheroes Day. This year, games and activities will include even more characters and activities that will take place both inside the museum and outside, with everything from face painting to Tiana's Kiss the Frog, Thor's Hammer Throw, Princess Elena's Jaquen Toss, Kryptonite Disposal Challenge, Sophia the First's Crown Toss, Giant Fire Truck Slide, Superhero Central, and much, much more. And of course, joining the fun will be not only 10 fictional characters, but our own real superheroes, Boynton Beach Police and Fire Department. We hope to see you then, and as always, come play with us, and we're, come play at the Children's Museum. We're learning as an adventure.
Thank you, Susan.
Samantha Shields here on behalf of the HAT Foundation. It's an honor to be before you and speak with you, and thank you for all the services that you provide to the community. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the HAT Foundation. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, and I here to talk about the hunger crisis. 12% of Americans are facing hunger deficit today in America, and that's over 38 million people. The HAT Foundation has taken the position to feed over 1 million children. By September 18th, we want to feed 1 million children, and we're asking for your help to support this cause. It only takes 10,000 people to pledge $100 to raise our goal. So far, we have raised $13,000, and just want to commend Commissioner Christina. 200 people is, you know, an amazing feat, and 13,000 is, you know, far away from our goal of 1 million, but we're going to keep pushing as September is the goal. And I just wanted to inform you all of our cause and hope that you get behind us. And would love to speak with anyone further, maybe following this week or next. And thank you for your time.
Before you leave, where's your location? Where you located?
We're located in West Palm Beach.
Out in West Palm?
I would have to check off the address. We're not physical location, we're out mobile, getting out in the community. But if you check our website, it has all of our information on there as far as our FEIN number and things of that nature.
Thank you. You always have the nice questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing, Samantha.
Evening.
May please the commission. My name's Joe Mariuma. I'm running for Circuit Court Judge on August 28th. I just wanted to say a few words. Thanks for having me here tonight. So for the past 11 and a half, almost 12 years, as an assistant public defender, I've been in court day in, day out. I've handled thousands of cases. I've had over 100 trials, and I've been in front of many judges, and I've seen what works and what doesn't work. And what I want to do as Circuit Court Judge is make sure the system is working the way it was designed to work. And what that means is, first of all, I believe in simple fairness. That's what I want to bring to the bench. I believe in looking at every case as unique and listening to all the facts and circumstances before making a decision. I don't believe in a judge just rubber-stamping decision-making. Second, I want to bring a more pleasant environment to the courtroom. The way the courtroom is set up right now, I'm aging at an accelerated rate. I run into friends who are like, Joe, what's happened to your hair? You're going gray. You're only 38 years old. So what I want to do is, I want to bring respect to anyone who comes before me, whether it's a plaintiff, a defendant, a victim, police officers, attorneys, courtroom staff, or anyone else who comes before me. I truly believe that the judge dictates the atmosphere in the courtroom. And finally, I believe that the judge dictates the atmosphere in the courtroom. And finally, I believe in efficiency. One of my chief complaints as an attorney by my clients is they're in fear of losing their job because of, they're sitting in court for four hours waiting for a two-minute reset. And it shouldn't run like that. The court system should be more efficient. It's not fair to the individual, and it's not fair to the taxpayer. So I'm a big believer in efficiency. You know, I've been dedicated to public service my entire career, and that's what I want to continue doing as Circuit Judge. Thanks for having me.
Joe, I'd just like to say, you know, I concur with you. 38 gray hair. I'm 68. End of this year, receding hairline, public service. Welcome to the club, sir.
All right. Thanks for having me.
Joe, if you'd like to share the election date, just to remind people to get out and vote, now would be the time.
Yes, it's August 28th.
Thank you.
Primary. Thank you.
Wondered where all this gray hair came from. Hey, Harry Woodworth, 685 Northeast 15th Place here in Boynton. Two things. One is, as a result of some of the stuff y'all have done in last year on sober homes, one of them in Coquina Cove has packed up and gone home. And that's quite a nice feeling. The neighbors last night were walking about six inches off the ground because he didn't have to put up with that anymore. So we need to do more of that, but just wanted you to get some feedback on that. I know we're not supposed to talk about it, but they're gone. The other thing I want to mention is, not quite as pleasant, Ocean Palms Plaza, formerly known as Yachtman's Cove, Yachtman's Plaza up there. We met with the city, Andrew Mack, Mr. Woods, before Christmas to try and get that guy to do the stuff he said he would do when he bought the plaza that was part of the terms and agreements of them getting the deal and all the money from the CRA and every other thing that the city's trying to do up there. And there's a landscaping plan that was, been in place since 1993. He agreed to come up to speed on that. And the meeting in December, after a year of trying to get that to happen, seemed like there would be two phases. One, he would do the south side so that the back coming up out of Coquina Cove looked reasonable, not looking at all the mess and the whole back of the building, and all the trees are gone. They paved the parking lot, tore out all the trees and landscaping. And on the north side would be Phase Two. Well, they did Phase One about two months ago, except they haven't been irrigating it. So half of the Phase One landscaping has now died, and they've never gotten around to Phase Two. So when we asked them about that, they said, well, they didn't think they'd bother with that. You know, city codes require this stuff. That wasn't a big fancy project, but that place used to produce one-inch-thick police reports every 90 days. And I think Commissioner McCray remembers that. Joe probably remembers that. I don't know if the new people aren't familiar with it. That place used to be as low as you could get on the totem pole of sewers. And it's going to go back that way unless they start doing something to clean it up, because you got a couple of nice restaurants in there. You got people with disposable income, thousands of them within walking distance. And the guy's doing absolutely nothing that he agreed to do. And he's backing away from the stuff he did agree to do. It's just ridiculous. So maybe we could get some help with that. Andrew Mack's involved. I mean, all the right people have been involved, but you got a guy that owns the property that just doesn't feel the need to play ball. Thank you.
Harry, this possibly would be something else to bring before the CRA when we meet next month.
I can bring it up there also.
I'll speak with Mike to potentially add it as an agenda item, but at this point in time, regarding CRA funds, we can't discuss it here. I'm sure you know that already.
No, it's not a funds issue. It's just compliance with city ordinances and stuff.
Right. Compliance with the funds that we've given them. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harry, excuse me. You wasn't here when I brought up about the meeting last night, but the two representatives, they're not here tonight, but I did speak to our city attorney, and he will give you a call in regards to what we can and cannot do because it's a problem with the boats up and down, you know, the intercoastal.
I deliberately stayed away from that tonight.
Right, I know, but I will.
My temperature's just lowering. Thank you.
He'll call you. All right.
Good evening. Tim Collins. I'm the business owner at the Fish Depot Seafood Market and also the Fish Depot Bar and Grill. I've been directed to come to you guys to consider, or actually to order the city manager to instruct her to assign a land planner to consider an ordinance change. As you know, at our restaurant, we have, our kitchen is in an old Airstream trailer. It's just not adequate for what we need. We can't keep the, you know, we can't meet the demands of our business. It's exploding. I don't know if you've been in tune with what's going on in Dade County and Miami and Wynwood, and what's just been approved in Fort Lauderdale and Flagler Village. But they're building these fantastic things inside of container boxes. They're building restaurants. They're building kitchens. They're building dining rooms and air-conditioned spaces. And they're taking them, they're painting them, and they're beautiful. But our city doesn't allow container boxes inside the city limits. And I understand. We used to have one at the fish market. You guys saw me get rid of it. I sold it because it was horrible and it was ugly. And I understand, but there's still container boxes everywhere. But I think, to get in tune with the times, these things are amazing. And what, you know, we propose to do is to take out the, move the Airstream, and we would put in basically a double-wide, a 20-by-16-foot container box. It's CAT 5-rated. It would be, it's not a permanent structure. It would be partially permanent. It'd just sit on a pad. And we'd have a full, brand-new kitchen in there that would be able to handle the volume that our restaurant's actually doing. As I said, Wynwood in Miami is full of these things. They're building houses in these container boxes. But again, our city ordinance does not allow for them within the city limits. So in order for me to even present a plan for approval, we need a land planner assigned to consider an ordinance change. And I've been told that I have to come to this commission in order to have them direct the city manager to assign a land planner for that.
Mr.?
Collins. Tim Collins, yes.
Collins. Well, thank you for coming up and bringing this item up. This is something I've been talking with staff for a couple of months on, for us to possibly consider. So perhaps if it is the will of the board, we can add this as a future agenda item and bring it up for discussion in a couple of weeks with a report from staff on the pros and cons about doing this. But this is something that we can discuss.
I'd be willing to get you information on them, show you what the designs look like, bring you pictures and articles for the other cities and how their approvals are done.
Trust me, I know all that stuff. But I think that conversation needs to be relayed with the rest of the commission so we can possibly bring that up. Does the staff like to comment on that, or can we just add that as a future agenda item and discuss it in the future?
Yeah, we can add it, and then we can come back with something preliminary. But I think to eventually draft an ordinance with some changes, it's going to be more comprehensive, probably even beyond just the restaurant use that we've talked about with potential housing and some other things. So we're just going to need a little bit of time on it.
Right, so.
Definitely something we've been chatting about.
We got run over this season. I know I'm past my three minutes, but we got run over this season. And we got to the point where it takes two hours when we get busy to get food from when you order it to get to your table.
Right.
So we need to expand, and to put something inside the building isn't really functional. And to actually have something to just plug and play right in its place, that'll actually be more sanitary, and we can attach a real sewer and grease trap to it.
Thank you.
And it'd be beautiful, so.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Collins. Again, thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for being a longtime resident here of Boynton Beach, or patron of Boynton Beach.
I'm not really a resident, but I'm a former business owner.
Not necessarily a resident, but business owner, yeah. Thank you. Again, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. This might take some time, but it is on our radar, and we'll be working on it in the future.
Is it a 30, 60, 90, a year-long process? I mean, how long?
I can't answer that. But again, we can bring it up as a future agenda item, and we can discuss it as a board.
Vice President, let me take that over. First of all, that's my district. It's in my district, and I'd like to set a staff. I'm just saying, would you think the first meeting in May, you have something to bring back to us, or you want to do it the second meeting in May? I'm trying to get a timeline nailed down.
We can have a preliminary discussion, the first or second. We're fine either one of those dates. To have any type of a draft ordinance depends on the scope of, it may take a while.
Excuse me, Laurie. Right now, I wouldn't want to go to an ordinance. I would like to have something.
Discussion first meeting. Sure.
Present it to us. I'm just saying, so we all can get to the table at the same time and saying, this would be the right way to go before we even touch an ordinance. Let's see if this is something that we really need to do or want to do. I'm just saying, this is the way I want to go first. Let's do a discussion. That's it.
Just to add to that, I think probably the best thing to do would have Mr. Collins come meet with us in the planning department, set up a meeting with our staff, and get some, your vision and what you're talking about, and see what alternatives we have now that's within the code or what we can do now. So, and not to complicate it with this future amendment. You can contact me. I'll give you my card.
Thank you, Andrew.
Herb Shaw, 1711 Wood Farm Drive. On June, on June the 2nd, a Saturday, you're going to see a cert people in action. I'd like to see somebody, commission, come down here, people in the audience, to see cert working. We just finished up our renewal class. The fire chief, Laurie, if you could notify the chief to find out where we're going, you could actually see us in action. And we need some of you people, commission, to be bandaged up. We'll put ketchup on on the board. All right. The next thing that I want to bring up is that, as you know, I made a lot of speeches on climate change. Well, what just happened, the current that goes up the east coast, I forgot what, there's a current that goes up on the east coast that modifies the weather. It's the worst thing. It's in trouble, and it's going to cause a major effect on climate change. The naysayers, like we got through it, and the EPA doesn't believe in climate change. It's happening. The other thing I want to know is that Madeleine Albright just wrote a book on fascism. She came from the central Europe. She had to go to London. She was forced out. Then after the war, she went back. And she wrote this book on fascism. And I've said this time and time again. I came up during the '30s, and fascism is coming. Fake news. There's a broadcasting company that just bought, owns 70% of the nation's stations, and they have all been compelled to read what the bosses want, statements, not free news. That's fake news. At the rate we're going, at the rate we're going, it's terrible. We have to stop what's going on. And hopefully, in November, we turn things around. And Joe, hopefully, you can turn things around, even on a state level. The other, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, Joe, where is this beer place? Because I like the beer. Where is it?
It's off, it's called Karma's Drive. It's up off High Ridge, near Minor Road, where Minor Road and High Ridge.
On the left side?
As you're heading north, it'd be on the right side.
Okay. Also, I'd like to know the status of what's happening with the police chief. What's, what's happening?
Give us an update.
The application submittal period ended April 2nd. So the recruiter is now vetting through applications. I think 83 applications were received. So we will be scheduling, I think, Julie, early May, mid-May, early May for preliminary interviews and some community engagement, of community reception. I think that's June. Yeah, that's June. So mid-May, we're doing, we're going to be, we're going to be talking about vetting down the applicant list, and then June, we'll be doing the interviewing and hopefully have somebody out of this pool selected by the end of June.
I hope somebody from the police department gets it, and you know where my money is. Thank you.
Mr. Sess. And with that, seeing no more, are you done? Oh, no, no, you're fine. Seeing no more individuals, public audience is closed. I want to make two announcements. One, I'd like to recognize a staff member here representing our Congresswoman Lois Frankel's office, who's here with us. So I hope she took notes on some of the comments made by the public here. That way, we can, great, great. That way, you can bring it back to the Congresswoman. In addition, I want to take some time to recognize our retiring, outgoing Public Works Director, Mr. Jeff Livergood, who's been a tremendous asset here to the city, who will leave a Jeff Livergood-sized hole in the city, but we hope that we can fill it up with, with his replacement. So I believe staff has some, a presentation.
Yes, and I just, we have a little surprise for him. But Jeff's been with the city for 17 years. He, I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm still a bit in denial. Next Friday, not this Friday, next Friday is his last day. I do know where you live, and I even actually have your gate code. Remember? So Jeff is my go-to guy when we get, as you all know, just bizarre requests or calls, and we don't know really who or what or how to necessarily handle something, or we need some institutional knowledge and memory. Jeff is the person I always called. And Andrew, albeit, Andrew will be stepping into Jeff's shoes, and I think he will fill them fine. But you've got, you've got a challenge there. So anyway, as far as part of Jeff's retirement, he has purchased a road trek travel vehicle, and he and his wife are going to hit the road, and they're going to have some fun. I'm going to ask Jeff to explain to you what the lettering on the back of this means, the BEAST. He's affectionately named his travel vehicle, the BEAST, and he will give you what that acronym stands for. But we thought you would enjoy, you'll have many, many hours with a cold beer in your right hand.
Two.
And a remote in your left hand, or something where you're going to sit and enjoy this chair, hopefully on many adventurous travels, Jeff. You know, we've, I've worked with you for the 10 years I've been here, and we've developed a friendship. I am truly going to miss you, and I know all of our colleagues and your colleagues in this organization, and I know the city commission will miss you greatly. And I just can't thank you enough for your outstanding service. There's no doubt you have left your mark on Boynton Beach. You have made it a better place to live. You have served in your public service truly from the heart. Everything you did, all of your decisions and outstanding decisions were contemplative and very thoughtful. And that is a pleasure to see and rare to see sometimes. And I just say thank you very much. And I really, truly hope you're, you're definitely young enough to go out and enjoy retirement, and I hope you have a blast.
Well, thank you very much. That's cool.
So what's the B stand for?
You can put a beer on both sides. B, BEAST. My wife and I were looking for a name for this unit, and we're fortunate to be able to buy it because we have an awesome son that worked very, very hard to go through undergraduate and through graduate school for free, because he was a very good student. He was, got an assistantship in graduate school. So he really didn't cost us very much to go to college. So what we've done is we've, we're going to name the unit Brad's Education Account Spent Trekking. He doesn't know that yet.
He's not getting the money.
Yeah, because I think he might ask for the money back. But he's, he's made me very proud as a father. So that's, that's actually kind of nice that I got to talk about that. I've enjoyed my time with the city, and I've, I've thought back on it over 17 and a half years of some things that I've done. And engineers typically point to projects. That's what we like to do. But I was, I noticed every once in a while when we'll go, I'll drive by the marquee out front. There was a project that I was involved with on a steering committee, oh my goodness, over 10 years ago, where we established our values: diversity, integrity, stewardship, and creativity. And we don't talk about those as much these days. We're all, we're on to strategic planning and some other things. But I think we're, we're well-served to be reminded of those. You know, diversity, we, we all have differences, and we need to celebrate those. Integrity means to do the right thing all the time, whether anybody's watching you or not. Stewardship was a value that I fought for as an engineer. We always try to find the best way to do work at the best price. That's kind of a challenge. It drives my wife crazy when I do it at home as well. But it's, it's what we should do as public employees. And the last value that, that we created, created was creativity. Getting employees to think differently, to think of different ways to do things and not be fearful of being criticized for a new idea. And I think it's good that I can remind ourselves of those values. It's something that I tried to live every day. The projects got done. We, you know, we did those, and we'll always do the projects in the city. But thank you. That's really awesome. I kind of like that. So thank you very much.
Jeff, before you leave, you know, I'd like to say, you know, just like Minister Wright said, I wish you good speed. I'm one of those commissioners who's been up here a long time. I remember when you and Kurt Brezner was both hired here in the city, and I could not figure out where we was going when we hired the two of you. Mr. Brezner has moved on. Laurie's only worked with you 10 years, and I've been here, as grandmama can say, for duration. You can tell your age. I'm not going to tell mine. But anyway, it's been a pleasure, pleasure riding with you, pleasure talking with you, pleasure staying on your bank, staying in your hair, making you do some things that you didn't want to do, but it was legal. Just wanted to say thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Jeffrey, Jeffrey, Jeffrey. You know, Jeff lives right in the next development, right next to mine in District 4. And Jeff, you've made me look like a rock star in District 4. I would get a complaint, and I would forward it right to Jeff, and Jeff would respond, sign my name at the bottom of it. And people would thank me for my quick response.
my name at the bottom of it, and people would thank me for my quick response to their inquiries, and the issues always got taken care of. Jeff, you know, engineers are dorky and quirky, and you have all those traits.
Thank you.
You really do. But the thing I, the thing I always liked about you, you always thought outside the box, you always thought ahead, you were always ahead of the curve, it was never just a Band-Aid solution to an issue or a problem. You always thought of something that could make it better, like you taught your employees and the people that work for you, think outside that box and don't worry about being criticized. I think you've made Boy in a much better place. You know, they say nobody's, you'll be replaced, you will. It's just the nature of the way this business is, but you'll never be forgotten. You know, people are remembered for two things in businesses or organizations, either they are really screw-ups, but they did one hell of a job, and you will always be remembered, Jeff, amongst us, for doing one hell of a job.
Very much.
I need to say one time, Mr. Livergood did think outside of the box, and he took the doors off of the bathrooms at Sarah Sims Park, and I got a phone call, so they said, Commissioner, they got the doors off. I said, excuse me, who the hell did that? And they said, oh, Mr. Livergood. So I approached him, he said, I'm thinking outside of the box, I said, so as you go back and put those doors on, get back in the box and stay, and we laughed about it, and we're okay. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to wish you well and to thank you. I think, you know, I've always thought the, kind of the highest compliment an employee can be paid is to be called professional, and to me, that means someone who does exactly what's expected of them, who goes above and beyond, and who does it well. And I think that it's, you'd be hard-pressed to find somebody who could be critical of the work you've done here for the city. So, you know, you are a professional, and you've become a good friend of mine through my time here, so I look forward to seeing you around while you're still in the city and in the area, and I look forward to coming out and seeing your place in the country once you, once you move north a little bit. So thank you very much for everything you've done for the city and for being a good friend and mentor to me during my time up here so far.
Well, thank you. City's in good hands. It was an awesome staff here, just an incredible staff in Public Works Engineering. There's some good people, they know what they're doing, they know what they're doing. So thank you.
Flash.
Sit down.
Get over it, Jeff, get over it. Stay there, I'm not done with you. A little bit more embarrassment for you.
Still working.
A little bit more embarrassment. So I remember the first time I really got to know Jeff, it was during our first, my first budget workshop session, and I remember I got really riled up, I'm sure you're sure Commissioner Casella might remember this, I got a little riled up and I kind of got a little emotional about the budget, and Jeff pulled me aside after that meeting, and he said, I wanted to reach across the room and give you a hug, because you get it. And that meant so much to me, that our staff is, are educated, they're willing to put in the work during hours after hours, and they understand what we elected officials go up, go through up here, and they're also living and breathing that grind each and every single day. So Jeff, I appreciate you, and when I say you're going to leave a Jeff Livergood-sized hole in this city, you really are, because you are one of a kind, and you're a tremendous find, and we're glad we were able to loan you from your wife for 17 years. We hope that she doesn't get too tired of you after she gets you back. And we just really look forward to continuing our friendship with you years to come, for years to come. So I thank you, I commend you for your work here, commend you for making us all look like rock stars, because anytime we sent you an email, you had a book-sized email back to us very quickly.
That was usually abbreviated version, by the way.
Oh, yes, I know. But thank you again, thank you, Jeff, for everything that you've done here for the city of Boynton Beach and for all of our residents.
Thank you. That's awesome, too. I don't know whose idea that was, that's pretty cool.
If the commission and some staff members would like to come down and take a picture with Jeff, this would be a good time, let's do that real quickly.
Turn the chair around.
Oh, no, there's no room, there's no room. We'll stay right here.
It's actually to get in the gap here.
Hey, hey. Give this to Jeff, he always thought this was the city of turning.
All right, I'll come up here. I'll be back here.
We're in the background.
Don't knock it over. I'm vertically challenged anyway, so.
Moving on to administrative, we have no applicants for this timeframe, but just to mention to you as the public, the board openings that we have, we have two openings, let me just make sure that they are corresponding here, we have two alternate positions open on the Arts Commission, two regular and one positions open on the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, one regular position for the Employee Pension Board, and one regular and two alternate positions open on the Senior Advisory Board. We look forward to having our public serve in those capacities. Moving on to item six, consent agenda, would the commission like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I just like to make, excuse me, a comment on 6H, the accept the quarter report on the red light camera program, and I can see my colleague down there grinning, smirking, looking at the numbers, the red light camera runners are down 10%. Who's the sergeant here? And I could be all wrong about these red light cameras, I hope I am.
Can you repeat that?
I could be wrong, Sergeant, I hope I am, and I hope that there's these quarter reports continue to come out, those numbers continue to decline, so, good job.
I'm happy to say I have not ran one either, so probably I'm at 10%, thank you.
Do we have any items that can be pulled from the agenda, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
One second, please, I'd like to pull an item, I'd like to pull item 6D from the agenda, if we could have a member of staff come down and talk to us about that and share that information with the public. Any other items? Okay, so while he works his way down, I'll issue a motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Captain Kelly with the Boynton Beach Police Department.
Captain McNeven also with the Boynton Beach Police Department.
This purchase is in reference to replacing the Aqua System Emergency Medical Directive Program that we currently use. This EMD program that we're replacing with Power Phone currently requires irrelevant questions that aren't specific to the calls that are coming in for service, their specificity is limited to just medical calls. The improvement with Power Phone will provide 90-plus additional integrated protocols and allow call-takers to be more flexible and to shorten the amount of time call-takers and telecommunications are spending providing service to the public and getting either medical help, police help, or routing them to the appropriate public service that they need. The entire project, to include the hardware, is completely reimbursable through Palm Beach County 911, so at a zero cost to the city.
Thank you, Captain, for sharing that. I wanted to just bring this agenda item to the attention of the public, because, one, this is something that is tremendous, this is helping us to better our response times, better our service to our constituents, and on top of it all, it's free. Thank you. So thank you for coming up and sharing that with us. I also, on a sidebar, I want to thank Captain McNeven, who sat down with me and really took some time to speak to a resident who was having some concerns, and through his efforts, he's really gotten a whole team of people on board on the complaint that was brought up by the individual, so I want to thank you, Captain, personally, for the work that you're doing and the team that you're leading to really make those things happen. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to bids and purchases over 1,000, seven items.
100,000.
100,000, thank you, Commissioner. We are here, approve, request action by commission, approve utilizing the Palm Beach County Contract Bid WUD 16-001/VMG extension through March 14 of 2019 with Aquifer Maintenance and Performance Systems Incorporated of West Palm Beach with the same terms, conditions, specifications, and pricing. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 7B, proposed resolution number R18-063, authorize the city manager to sign a proposal with RouteWare Incorporated of Portland, Oregon, utilizing the HGAC Buy Contract Florida FL-17 for the purchase of onboard computing system for installation in public works solid waste vehicles for the amount of $92,827 plus travel costs not to exceed $7,500. Staff, if you, I believe you have a presentation for us?
I do. Jeff Livergood, Director of Public Works and Engineering, and Dave Monistam, our Solid Waste Manager. We're going to kind of do a tag team, and I promise you talk about my, how much I can talk, no longer than two hours tonight. I've been saving this one up for 17 and a half years. Being involved in solid waste, solid waste in Boynton Beach is still kind of being done the old-fashioned way, and for years we've been looking at software solutions that would allow us and allow the supervisors to many, better manage the vehicles and its equipment and the employees, as far as where they are geospatially within the city, how much of their routes are completed. It's not uncommon today for us to have four automated truck routes picking up garbage and have one truck break down, and we'll send a backup truck into a route, and he doesn't know exactly how far the first driver got. And so when that can happen, we can miss a street, we can miss two streets, and we're getting phone calls from the residents at the end of the day, or the next morning, how come we weren't picked up? And that was simply because of confusion between multiple drivers going into an area. We know that one of the best solutions that's available is, it's called AVL, Automatic Vehicle Location, that's using the GPS systems, many of us use those in our cars, but GPS systems that communicate back to our main office that tell us at any given point where that vehicle is. UPS, FedEx, many of these, you know, the companies nowadays use those systems so that they can keep track of where their vehicles are, and we think it's time that we use those capabilities to keep track of where our solid waste equipment is. Obviously, we've got the benefits of knowing where the equipment is, but we also have the benefits with this system of being able to photograph where those, where that equipment is, what they see in the road, so if a solid waste vehicle is driving up to a home at 9:30 in the morning, and the garbage cart is not out, they will be able to take a photograph of the house, note the cart's not out, and within 15 seconds back in the office, the office staff has a photograph and a notation that the garbage cart was not out. In today's world, when a customer calls us and said we missed their house, and they were the only house that we missed, perhaps they didn't have their cart out in time, and we will go back and get that cart, because the customer is never wrong. We never want to call the customer a liar. This will allow us to prove and save considerable fuel expense and time in not doubling back to homes. With our commercial routes, when we talk commercial routes, we're talking our front-load routes for restaurants, that type of thing. If you've ever seen the restaurants, they have gates that the customers are required to open. Oftentimes, when our solid waste vehicles go into the restaurants, the gates will not be open, and we don't want our truck to sit there for 20 minutes trying to find the manager of the restaurant to open the gates, because we have another 200 restaurants or customers that we need to pick up that day. And so this system will allow us to also photograph and document those areas where we have problems, so that we can work proactively with that customer, so that they can help make changes. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. Let's go back to where the customer, who's a residential person, who can't, is not picked up, and you noted that it wasn't at their own time, how would you alleviate the problem? Would you say we will not be back, or we will charge you, or, I need to know what will be the recourse that they will have, I'm just saying.
But we're not sure yet, because we don't know how much of that we will find, and as we start documenting with photographic evidence, we do, you're correct, we do have the option of charging them if we return, but we primarily want to be able to use it as an educational tool. We may give one-time forgiveness and go back and get the cart and document it, but the goal isn't to charge people extra or to cite them, it's just simply to have people get their carts out in time so that we can pick it up and run efficiently.
After we do it for a while, then we go back and reevaluate.
Yes, exactly.
And also, I wanted to add something, there is a perception of service failure on the side of the driver, so that takes away that perception from a customer service point of view, the fact that the driver is able to take a picture automatically and send it to the office, and so we can let whoever was in that area at a specific time.
What I'll do real quickly is, I've just got some slides here, and then I'm going to let Dave talk a little bit about operations.
Before you go to that slide, let me just go back to this price, okay? Explain to me about the travel costs not to exceed $7,500. Explain the travel costs, who's going to be traveling?
The vendor will be traveling to us, they're a national company, so they'll be traveling to us for education, for training, and for setting up our vehicles. They'll be installing the equipment on our vehicles here in, at Boynton Beach.
Yeah, but that's what I need to hear, all right.
Yeah. RouteWare, just real quickly, some of this is touting the company, but they're 18 years in the business in the waste hauling industry. They're headquartered in Portland, Oregon, thousands of trucks, these guys know what they're doing. Business, different cities that they use at Lexington, Kentucky. One of the things that we did when we started dealing with the system is we went live in their other cities as to how it works. RouteWare, we have our trucks, we'll have the system installed, the trucks are connected to a GPS and a cellular network, goes back to the internet, all of the information will be stored on the cloud, and then it comes to our computers at work, so we'll know exactly where the trucks are at all times, and, let's see here, I'm going to go through some of this. Some of the reports that we can get are idle times, driver behavior, dispatching, fuel consumption, safety, we're going to know at any given time the speed of the vehicles, we often hear from the public how fast the vehicles are driving, or they ran a stop sign or whatever, we'll be able to go back in time and know that. We're not going to use this for disciplinary purposes, we're going to use this for teaching. And Dave will talk a little bit about how he used it at waste management in order to extract excellence by pointing out the good drivers versus the drivers that need to improve. Each driver will have a tablet that's located in their truck. That tablet will have a number of screens, but it'll basically tell the driver which homes have yet to be collected and where they stand on the status, they'll be able to use the tablet to communicate back and forth by push-button. One of the reasons this works now versus maybe five or 10 years ago is not every person, all of us, how many, you know, many of us now have the touchscreen phones, we all know how to use them nowadays, the drivers know how to use them, so this is just a very large tablet in their vehicle that's basically a large touchscreen, that's going to be their method of communicating, no cell phones, no radios, all the communication, it's by push-button, they can't communicate while they're driving, they have to stop if they're going to send a text message. The office staff sees...
I got another question. Will this be on all of the vehicles on, at solid waste?
Yes.
Even the little trucks that they run around, the supervisors?
Not the supervisors' trucks, no, we're not going to spend the money on the supervisors. We don't need to know where they are as much as we need to know where the trucks that are being productive are.
Okay, the garbage trucks, the trucks that pick up debris.
Cherry pickers.
Yes.
Cherry pickers?
Yep.
Why you want to know what the supervisors are?
Oh, because they better be doing their job and watching this.
Okay.
The office sees the status of each truck, and the status, and it's a little hard to see on the screen.
Oh.
But the status changes by color, and the color coding is going to tell whether or not the route driver's keeping up with the pace as to where they should be through the course of the day. They'll tell if there's any excess idle time, if they're broken down, that type of thing.
Can I comment on that also?
Sure.
We don't have a lot of slides.
Into the mic, Dave?
Yes, we don't have a lot of slides, and I don't want to torture everyone here going back to the slides, as Jeff is speaking, we would like to tag along back and forth. On this screen, here, you could see the driver's workbook, or what you call the, the wild sheet for the day. You have all the customers, they are sequenced, they are in a sequence order, and the driver can technically go from servicing, let's say, KFC to the next stop, what's going to be Seven-Eleven, and they are all in order. Throughout the day, he can receive new service orders from the office and newly added customers throughout the day, where he can technically call dispatch or send a message back to dispatch, letting him know that he received the order to be serviced throughout the day. So as Jeff mentioned earlier, you can't see pretty much everything on the screen, but this is technically paperless, where the driver don't have to take the old folder where he has a bunch of sheets he has to flip through and throughout the day to see what he has, even though some of them he would go by memory, but this is technically paperless. What we would love to do from the beginning is running the old system, parallel with the new system, until all the drivers are comfortable going completely paperless, until we can completely use the system with no errors.
Let me ask you a question, because I'm getting some concerns now, with the beeping in and all that stuff, will they be able to continue to drive and do whatever they, because I'm thinking about, do they have accidents, you know, I'm getting...
There is a threshold for five miles per hour, once the driver starts moving, it locks the system, you can't really do anything. I'll let Jeff speak a little bit to that, and I'll add a little bit more to it down there.
Yeah, basically, the drivers are not going to be able to enter data or make changes on the tablet unless they are stopped, and the system is programmed that way. It's, it's more efficient, these are just the buzzwords, I think we all know, that's safer for the drivers, more pickups per route per day, because we become more efficient, additional revenue, what from extras and added customers, as the routes, as the drivers are going through the city, they're the ones that see the big piles, they're the ones that see the, 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 the work that we need to do that's at an extra fee, they're going to be able to quickly take a photograph and send it to a supervisor, so that they can have an immediate notice that they need to be talking about with the customer, whether it's dealing with community standards or a code violation, or whatever, be an immediate process.
Thank you, that would be a plus, because a lot of times, they see piles, and I see them pass by piles, they don't say anything, so hopefully they will put this into action, I'm just saying, because I have to call and say, you know, what happened to that pile, you know? Okay?
Exactly.
As long as I know it's, it's going to be in the system, right?
Exactly.
Oh boy, you're leaving, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
I'll be sleeping in my chair.
Yeah, okay.
There are real-time status updates, about every fifteen seconds, the, the office staff and the supervisors will get an update of where everyone is, less overtime, if we're more efficient, we're not going to work as many hours, reliable communications, the text messaging system, turn-by-turn directions for substitute, and we'll talk a little bit about this in helper drivers. Whenever we have a, a route, we're going to have about fourteen hundred houses in a day that one truck is going to pick up, if that truck breaks down at one P M. in the afternoon, and they still have four hundred or five hundred homes, we then, we need to send another backup truck there. The supervisor will be able to, in the office, highlight the truck, the homes that have not been picked up, slide that group of homes over to the backup truck seamlessly, and that backup truck was going to know exactly where to go. So the assignment isn't going to be go out here and start on the north end of town and work your way south, the driver will know exactly which street and which house they need to start on, so it's going to help the drivers be more efficient. This is something that RouteWare gave us, that they think that we can save two-hundred-and-sixty thousand a year, I would be very happy if we saved a hundred to a hundred and fifty, but I think we're going to save it through the efficiencies, and we'll see it. That's going to help us to keep the pressure on, down on raising rates in the future. Obviously, improved customer service. Let's see here, each truck, well, not each truck, but vast majority of the trucks are going to have cameras mounted in a location that will be able to provide us the photographs that we need to document. Again, as soon as they take a photograph, within fifteen seconds, it's in the supervisor's office, so we'll always be able to do that. Everybody wins, obviously, customer satisfaction, the drivers, it's easier for them to, to do it, they make fewer mistakes, dispatchers, the office staff have a better understanding, the supervisors, at the end of the day, are going to know exactly how much of their routes are done. They don't have to go out in their little trucks, Commissioner McCray, and chase the truck around, make sure that they got the routes, and they're going to be able to look at the computer to know that everything was taken care of. Dave may talk a little bit, because he's talked about driver coaching and using this system at waste management.
Go back to that slide you just left about where you show about, go back, right there. I have concerns about if it's going to take the entire property, I'm just saying, somebody might be out there, you know, not very well dressed, you know, how much of this, I'm serious, because I...
I don't have an answer to that one. I didn't expect that question. The photographs are going to stay in our system, obviously, we're, I, I...
Oh, okay.
I would, I would caution that every resident, if you're coming out to your garbage cart or your recycling bin, please wear clothes.
I would like to caution them too, but someone run out wrong, okay? I'm just...
The sad part is that we live in a society where we actually have to say that.
Yeah, I know, and, and I, I think you say that, Commissioners, we've all seen it. Yeah, some of the things that we see are, and we did work with our I T. staff, John, are you here? Yes, we, we worked with our I T. staff, they are actually kind of excited about it too, because it's kind of geeky and techie. You know, customer service better, fewer and shorter calls, pictures help, because we'll be able to email the picture to the customer. In the long run, there's other things it's going to help us with, we know that we want to expand our recycling. This is going to help us to know exactly where in the community we're recycling and where we're not, just simply by the stop and starting of the vehicle, we will know every GPS coordinate of when a recycling vehicle stops, so if a recycling vehicle makes no stops in a neighborhood on any given day, we're able to develop trends of where we need to start marketing ourselves and marketing our recycling more. We don't have to just know it intuitively, we'll know it scientifically through the math.
Just caught me, I'm just saying, recycling, you just caught me.
So everybody put your clothes on and recycle. The, got me all messed up now. The, one of the things that we think can, we can do in the future to, to respond to some of our commercial customers is make this information available online. Now, I would caution you that it's going to take the staff a year or two to get accustomed to using the system themselves, so any online activity isn't going to be in, in September of this year, but we believe that there's value particularly for our commercial customers, that they might be able to look online and see how much longer until they can expect the truck that might be there, so they can open up the gates and, and anticipate the vehicle. So this is a high-tech solution that we've been looking for, for a while, we've actually put into the budget next year to add our street sweeper to this program, because we have to log the number of lane miles that we sweep for N P D E S. purposes, so we're going to be able to monitor our street sweepers and be able to calculate lane miles very, very easily.
And the street sweepers, we have one or two?
One, just one.
Why you put ass on it about street sweepers?
Because maybe we need two?
I know we do, you don't sweep in just...
It was Freudian, we just have one. If, if, Dave, if you'd like to, now, Dave worked with a, a different system with waste management, a proprietary system, so we couldn't use theirs, because waste has their own, if I, if I believe that's correct?
Yes, it, it, it does the same thing, it's called onboard computing, because it's a different system, and it bears a different name, but it, it does pretty much the same thing. If we go back to slide number six.
Okay.
Please. Six.
That one?
Yes, please, thank you. Basically, the three main important aspects of this system are the customer service, control, quality control, and productivity. Jeff did a great job clarifying some of the main points, I'd like to talk about the productivity part of it, especially idle time, which is my favorite. You can take a driver in the morning and have a small walk and talk, or a small coaching session, and, and, and tell them, hey, you have not met your goal yesterday, or walk me through your day, how did it go, I, I see you have a tremendous amount of idle time, what happened here and there? How do you do that? With all the information that's coming in, you take it, you can take any kind of metric system, you can use moving average, you can use regression, you can use last value, or you can take a six-week average or a twelve-week average based on the information that you've already had, and show the driver that he or she's not meeting his efficiency, or her efficiency goals. Technically, idle time comes from what we call a time bucket, the time bucket starts from clocking to clock out, and in between that, you have the leave yard, pre-trip first, of course, and leave yard, en route, off route, travel time, what we call windshield time, going from route to lintana disposal site or a delway, and you can take that information and, and optimize it and see which one is the best option for the driver. You can tell them, hey, I noticed you are spending forty-five minutes at the disposal site, including from gate in and out, if you geo-code it, and you can basically come to a conclusion with your operation statement, say lintana disposal site is not the best site to go to. You can also tell the driver, hey, you have a twenty-five minute idle time here, why don't you explain to me what happened here yesterday?
All right, Dave, let's not get in too much into the weeds.
Yes, exactly.
But I think this is, this is great, this is a fantastic program here, any comments from the Commission?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. So when, when they're outside my door, quarter, seven in the morning, rattling my trash pickup, you'll know they're there? Okay, good.
Yes, and you have what you call the playback or plain versus actual, where you can actually go?
I'm just being a little sarcastic about the start time.
Okay.
Okay. Jeff, I see here that there's a annual monthly maintenance fee of ten thousand dollars, is that kind of like a locked-in figure for an extended period of time, or is that subject to fluctuate?
It's a locked-in figure for the term of this contract, yes.
Okay.
Purchases funded out of the sanitation fund, this is a matter of information versus the general fund.
Okay, and just, just a point of observation, you know, out there watching, the guys do a great job, especially the recycling guy, there has to be a better way than having a one-man operation on those recycling trucks, where the individual has to drive the truck, get out, put the two different colored bins into the respective containers, jump back into the truck, drive twelve, fifteen feet to the next driveway, jump back out and do, repeat the thing over a hundred and fifty times in my neighborhood. There's got to be a better way, and I don't know what that is, and Jeff, maybe you should have figured it out before you leave, how we can, you know, make that more efficient than the way it's doing.
Yes, there is a better way, I'd say, for lack of a better word, unfortunately, for Palm Beach County, they have what they call the single stream recycling compared to split service for recycling, compared to Broward County, they use the sixty-five or ninety-five gallon cart, where the driver is servicing a small eighteen-gallon bin, it cannot be picked up by the automated truck. In Broward County, I'd say ninety-five, if, if not more than that, of the recycling services automated, the driver comes in, picks up the cart, automated, the service is automated, and puts it down and goes to the next house. So there is a better way, unfortunately, for the county, that's the way they want it, but I don't know if they see the, it's, they'll have to change that.
So if I can decipher what you just said, you're saying that there's a, a truck that actually just picks up the whole thing and then sifts it, ciphers it out?
What he's talking about, there's two issues, what, we got manpower and we've got the, the method of disposal of the recycled product. Some counties, Broward is a single stream, you mix everything, you don't have blue and yellow bins, it all goes into one, you can put it into an automated cart and pick it up with an automated truck. We have split stream in Palm Beach County, which means we have the blue and the yellow bins, they have to be separated, and the truck has to be separated, that's one aspect that would make it more efficient. The second, what Commissioner Casello's talking about, is one dude or one guy driving around, getting out of the car or the vehicle, emptying it, that's a function of people and time. Right now, if we're able to get all of our recycle routes collected through the course of the day without an incredible amount of overtime, it's more efficient to do it the way that we're doing. If we are able to use RouteWare to expand our recycling base, i.e. more people recycling, then the demand is going to be greater, it may be of value to put a second driver on there or more people on the recycling vehicle, but right now, we're getting it done in the time that we're paying them.
And, real quickly...
As my Commissioner?
Real quickly, I'd also add that we would love to have it just to meet our recycling quota, because I believe for this city, we have to meet a certain number, percentage for recycling, so if we were able to have just carts, single service for recycling, then it'll be a better option, yes.
Right, but that option basically makes us have to ask the county to change our methods, and that may be a little hard for us to do at this point in time, so maybe we'll, we'll lean our focus towards option two.
Step by step.
Yes. Commissioner?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. When can we expect a report, if we go ahead, if we approve this, when can we expect a report back from you all saying this is how well we are doing, this is not working, you know?
I'd say from three to six, I don't know if that's too much of a big interval.
Three months is not going to be long enough.
Yeah, six months.
Six months, but I'm, I'm just saying, would that, because would that be long enough, six months, would that be long enough to give us feedback saying this is working or it is not working, or we have this problem, we're fixing this problem? I'm not trying to do your job, but when I put this kind of money in and said this is what we're doing now, I like to get feedback saying, hey, we met our goal, we, we're doing what we're supposed to do, the train...
We'll bring back an assessment in six months.
Yes, six months, and we'll definitely, we'll definitely get you some feedback, but I can personally tell you with my experience with the onboard computing system, with the waste management, and all the different municipalities that have used it, it has proven to be very successful, and there's a lot more we can do with it.
David, I understand that, I understand what you're saying, but I want to hear a report back from Boynton.
Yep, yes.
And what I, and I would encourage each of you, that as the system is implemented, take some time, go into the Public Works compound, and sit down with staff and watch the computer run for an hour, you'll get a good feel of how the staff is using it, and you'll see the kind of reports that can be generated, so you'll, it'll be kind of fun, too.
To have that kind of time, I don't.
Commissioner, I'll be retired, but I'll join you, we'll both do it.
Never mind.
So Jeff, you have ten days, no pressure, to get everything done that you ever wanted to do in the city.
And you're going to let me do more, we don't, and we're going to have a special commission meeting.
Ten days, Jeff, ten days.
Motion to approve.
Thank you for that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect unanimous support for this project, so thank you. Moving on to public hearing, we are, we have tabled item A and removed item B, we're moving on to item C, proposed resolution number R eighteen dash zero five nine, approve second amendment to the land development agreement between the City of Boynton Beach and Sky at Boynton Beach LLC, and authorize the release of surety to bury overhead utility lines across federal highway at Southeast Second Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to city manager's report, Lori?
Well, it's that time of year again where we need to, we're starting to talk about budget, we've, staff's been working on it since February, but we, following last year's format and what we've used the past few years, it seems to work for the board to have a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, July sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are going to be our primary budget workshops, and I, if you'll note the start times, and tell me if you're still good with those start times, we try to stagger them, Monday, the sixteenth, to start at five P M., so it allows people that are working to have an opportunity to come, provide some input in the evening time. Tuesday, we start earlier, because that's also a city commission meeting day, that's at ten A M., and then Wednesday, if needed, typically, we, we get things done in Monday, Tuesday, but we always allow for a third day, Wednesday, July eighteen, we would begin at two o'clock if needed. We will be adopting a tentative millage rate as well as a fire assessment resolution, and then the mayor last year added kind of a pre-proposed budget workshop, he's, we're proposing Tuesday, May twenty-nine, at six-thirty P M., and, and his thoughts on that were to provide the, the public an opportunity to maybe have some input prior to staff completing a proposed budget, because during the workshops in July, obviously, the budget is for the most part completed, and then we take commission input, so there's a, a fourth meeting date there on May twenty-nine, if you're agreeable with that as well.
And I get a motion, or is everybody in consensus?
Discussion, what's the May twenty-ninth one for?
Public workshop.
It's a, it's a... It's a preliminary budget workshop. I know the mayor had asked about it last year, and we started it. We just had basic staff and the commission was here, and then the public has an opportunity to come provide some input prior to us completing our proposal for the budget. So we did that last year. If you, it's up to you as a group if you want to do that again this year.
It's called an input budget workshop from citizens. I'm just saying, we do our workshop.
Correct. And take public input then, too, but that's up to.
Yeah. Okay, if we can get a consensus, everybody's on board?
On board.
For those dates and times? All right, sounds good.
And we'll put these on the website and get it published and Facebook and all that good stuff.
Fantastic. Moving on to new business, proposed resolution R-18-064, accept the transfer of property at 201 Northeast First Ave from Boynton Beach CRA. Can I get a motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to 12, legal. We've tabled item A, but we'll discuss this at a later time. Moving on to item B, proposed resolution R-18-065, authorize the mayor to sign lease documents for temporary space needed for city services to operate during construction of Town Square Project at the following locations, 2045 High Ridge Road for the library, 209 North Seacrest Boulevard for the library annex, 3301 Quantum Boulevard for the city hall, and 3602 to 3606 Quantum Boulevard for police headquarters. As an understanding from our city attorney, we will entertain a motion with some final legal actions that may need to be done after entertaining the motion.
That's correct, Vice Mayor. And there's additional language in the body of the resolution that should be in front of you that indicates that there may be at least one sublease that needs to be substituted with an assignment of lease for technical reasons and to avoid some penalties associated with the sublease. So that's in the body of the resolution.
Can I entertain a motion?
No.
Discussion?
Yes, please, because, you know, when we're doing something of this magnitude, and I need to hear this from staff, staff need to come down and present to the public that's here and tell us, you know, what we are paying, how long we'll be paying this, what it's going to cost this city. I'm just saying, you know, I can go ahead and offer the motion, you know, and they can get a second, but we need discussion, and we need to find out, let the public know where these dollars are going. I'm just saying, you know, I don't mind approving it, but if it's going to be for two years, three years, I need to know.
So we'll have a presentation by staff, and then we'll entertain a motion in a second.
All right, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. So what you have in front of you is the four leases for the four temporary spaces. Each one is a little unique and a little different. Each one runs anywhere from 20 months to 29 months?
Yes.
Depending on the location and the need. The intent and the plan is to stagger the moves. So the library will move first, and then PD.
Yeah, I'm going to need you to tell me what's going to be 20 months and what's going to be to 29 months. You know, it's 20 to 29 months.
Yeah, we'll go through each building, Tim.
Please.
You want to do that? Start with the library.
This is what I need.
So the library will be 20 months.
Thank you.
That'll be the first, because that's, the intent is for that to move. So that's the library on High Ridge Road, the facility, and the, what we call the annex, which is on Seacrest next to the post office.
And Tim, if you could, please explain what the library annex will be for?
And how much it costs, and I need to know the prices.
All right, so we'll do the, I'll try to do them in order. So the High Ridge Road is for the main library site. And that is coming in at, it's 23,000 square feet, and the monthly estimated rent for that is $25,975. Rent would begin on June 1st. And that will house the main part of the library, which is adults and all the book, the stacks and the DVDs. The library annex, which is across the street.
I'm still on the one that's going to be the main one. Okay, you said it's going to cost us, how much a month?
$25,975.
Okay, now going for the 20 months or half a month, what is going to be the total cost for the city? Now we're doing some nice figures right here.
I should have brought mine to you.
$519,500.
$519,500. Okay, go to the next one.
I didn't bring mine.
Before you go to the next one, Tim, if you could just share with the public, will this be a fully operating library with the books, or will we have a limitation in the number of books that are available to the public?
Colin Groff is the city manager, and I'm going to speak for Craig, and then when I say something wrong, he'll come up and hit me. The main library temporary location is a, I'm going to call it a full-service library minus some of the programs that we can't do in a temporary space. But there will be books, the book stacks will be stacked. You'll be able to check out books, check out DVDs. There'll be sitting areas and computer areas, and all of the functions we do with the minus of some functions that just can't occur in a temporary space. There are some things that they do that can't occur. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what those are, but they're minor functions that they do right now. The annex space, which you'll talk about later, is for the kids, the teens after school to come in, and it'll be limited services, but there'll be computers, study areas, and then some things like that. So we're going to be able to offer, I'm going to say 95% of the services they're offering right now between the two spaces. But there are a few things that either they're not routine items or the things that happen just occasionally that we just won't do during this time period, because it is a short time period. It's not very long, so.
Thank you. Where would the archives for the city be stored? Because there has to be a certain air condition. Where would they be housed?
Right. So this, the building, the temporary space of the library does have a room that's going to be set up for the archives with the air conditioning, probably a little better than they are now, because the place we have now has some issues with the building. So it's actually probably going to be better.
Will we still have the online high school program continuing?
Yes, yes.
And can you also just emphasize a little bit on the library annex and its location and why that's a benefit?
I'm going to let Craig do that, because that's library details.
Just want to have you explain why that's a benefit to have the library annex still be in the downtown area.
Okay. Craig Clark, Library Director. We decided to keep the kids over here, because that's where most of them live, and 95 is really kind of a barrier for kids to walk across. So we really wanted to keep them over here, and it's going to be more like an after-school homework help site. We will have some computers. We will have some collections. But it's only about 4,000 square feet, so we're really limited. But we will have the storytimes going on in the morning still. And then what Colin was saying about the temporary site over on High Ridge, we're not going to be able to have any type of programming over there. Basically, we're taking a 63,000-square-foot building and jamming it into a 23,000-square-foot space. So we will have, you know, we will be checking out, it will be open to the public. We'll be checking out all of our items. We'll be assisting customers like we do now, but just very limited. We will have some computers available for the public to use as well. Probably not as many as we have right now, because space is going to be an issue, but we're going to make the best of it and continue great library services.
Great, thank you, Craig.
I got a question.
Comments?
Yeah. You say most of the children live on this side of 95. How many children live on the other side of 95? Where'd you get those statistics from?
Well, we find most of our kids that...
Who's "we"? Library?
Commissioner, if you could let...
From our observation, my observation.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
As a library director.
Good.
I believe most of our kids live in our neighborhoods that attend the library. Most of them are dropped off by buses, multiple buses, on Seacrest, and that's where most of our kids come from.
From buses.
Yeah, many cross the street from Seacrest, so they all, almost all of them come on foot or bicycle.
Okay. The other question I have, how many site locations were investigated before we decided on this particular site?
Yeah, the challenge with this move is, is we're looking for short-term leases. So there, we looked at, I know when we started, we had a list of, I'm going to say, over 30 sites, 30 buildings. Most of those got weeded out because they need minimum five-year leases. And five years is an expensive lease when you only need it for 20 months or 24 months or 29 months. So when we narrowed it down, we narrowed it down, I think we had one extra space we looked at, but it just didn't fit anything. It didn't fit City Hall, it didn't fit. So we really, the good thing about Boynton Beach is not a lot available. That's the thing. So we had to find, so we found places that either there were new buyers that were looking for, to get tenants in there for short-term, willing to do short-term leases, or there's subleases, meaning somebody had moved out and the owner's trying to sublease. And we were a little bit limited, but we did start, we scoured the entire city, staying inside the city limits for the square footage that we were looking for. So we gave the list out and said, this is what we're looking for. They scoured, they brought them all back. We looked through them, we pinpointed some. We actually had to go back out a second time, because for PD, we didn't find any space that worked, so we had to go back out a second time. Luckily, we found one the second time around. So we did quite a bit of work trying to find the space, but we were, it narrows it down because of the timeframe we wanted. In most commercial spaces, they don't want to do short-term leases. We were actually, I feel very fortunate, we found these, because it is tough to find these. Most people didn't think we would, so.
So they're not going to actually be charging us during the build-out, correct?
Yeah, you get the build-out, that, you don't get charged during the build-out. The leases start, and then there's some timeframes for build-out. We do the build-out, we move in, and leases start. And again, you know, our goal is timing the leases to the timing of the construction schedule that we have right now, so we're not, we're not having to pay leases for multiple years after we've moved into the new buildings.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. The library annex, how many employees will we be housing in that library annex?
At this point in time, we're going to have the three AmeriCorps staff. We're going to have the four full-time U Services staff, and probably a couple of part-time staff as well to be support.
Thank you. Colin, you just said that, you know, the build-out or something, you want to be like through the 20 months. What happened if we are not completed within those 20 months?
All of these leases, I believe all, all of the leases do have extensions in them that we can exercise if we need to. So we built in that, you know, we're shooting for one time, but we build in extra time in case something happens. So I'm pretty comfortable with the schedule we have now. We actually have a little bit of slip time in there in case something happens. But if something major happens, we've built in extensions in all of these leases. And all of the owners have agreed to that, which is, which, again, I think it's very good. A lot of these owners have stepped up and tried to help the city, because they know what the city's trying to do, so.
Okay, if something happened, like with building City Hall, the police department, and the library, and I'm just saying, we have contractors, okay, they don't meet those deadlines, then who pays the lease? Do we have to continue to pay the lease? Will that be something that they will pick up?
Okay, so there are liquidated damages in the contract. So if the contractors do not meet the timeframes, they will pay us those liquidated damages. Liquidated damages are then used to pay for our damages, which would be extended leases in those. So the answer is yes. It goes through the contractor and back to us if they miss their contracted deadlines.
Tim, you can continue, please.
Oh, go ahead. So on the library annex, just to finish that up, the monthly rent on that is $8,360.
For a total of $167,200 for the 20 months. I did all the math for you while you guys were talking.
Good, because I forgot my, I didn't bring my sheet with me. So that takes us for the library and the library annex. The next one is 3301 Quantum Boulevard for City Hall, City Services, which is everything that's in this building except for the police department and the commission chambers. So that lease...
You say except for the commission chambers. What would the commission be holding their meetings, sir?
And including the commission chambers.
No, not including.
Excluding.
That's what I heard. I'm, you know, whoever be holding our meetings, I'm trying to help us think before y'all will start banging things out and I be sitting in the parking lot.
Right. So we're looking at a couple of locations. One would be IPC.
Coastal, Intercoastal Park.
Intercoastal, to hold in there.
Or Women's Club.
Or Women's Club, or we even thought about Fire Station 5 in the big training room, because there's plenty of parking there. So we're still deciding on that.
Okay, the water bills, how will the people get to pay those water bills?
Colin and I are going to, are working on that now to figure out locations that we can do downtown for a payment center. We'll also be taking them at City Hall on Quantum, but we're going to find a location down here to also to take them. Yeah. So the rent at the, for the City Hall, again, it's about 23,000 square feet, and the rent on that is $42,166 a month. And that rent would begin on August 1st.
For a total of $1,012,000 for the 24 months, for two years total.
And all those rental payments, just so you're aware, will be obviously budgeted in our budget, so during our budget process in July, we'll program in the lease payments for the next 12 months for these spaces. You okay with the City Hall? Okay.
If he doesn't ask a question, that just means keep going. Keep going.
So the last one is 3602 to 3606 Quantum Boulevard, and that's for police headquarters. That one is approximately 27,300 square feet, and the monthly cost to that is $24,501. And that rent would begin on August 1st also.
That's a total of $588,042. So all, so adding all the four buildings up for the period of 20 to 24 months is a total of $2.286 million for the, for that duration for the temporary move.
Lori, have you included the $250,000 for outfitting of the police headquarters?
No, that's just the rents. No, I don't have that, so...
So in addition to the rents on all the spaces, there is, on the library site, the main library site, there is some build-out that we need to do. I don't know the exact details. Minimal, we're estimating about $25,000 to do that build-out. That'll be a one-time cost for us in the next couple of months to put doors and whatever we need to make it functional for that, like making the room appropriate for the archives and things like that. The City Hall, there's some build-out that's required there as far as cubicles, office space, things like that. We're estimating that to be about $46,000, but that lease has a tenant improvement allowance from the landlord of $46,000, so we'll lay out the cost and we'll get reimbursed for that $46,000. That's to be even swapped for us. The police station is the one that at least has no tenant improvement allowance. The estimate right now to do the build-out for the police, and remember with the functions that we do as a police department, it does require, the most build-out is about $250,000 that we're estimating right now. That's to do for, secure the evidence that they're going to have to do, and detective rooms and things like that that they have to separate out.
Holding cells for prisoners. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. Right now, we're looking, with all that we're trying to do now, we're looking at about two points.
2.5. Got it?
No, 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 no. With 2.5, let me finish. With the rent and the build-out, we're looking at two point, almost like $800,000. Yeah, 2.8, this is what I'm saying. Okay, how will we handle, I'm just saying, citizens, you know, coming to the police department? Will that be friendly police at the, and how will they know where the police department is, the police station is? is, the police station is? I'm just saying, who's doing this?
I'll do this one. Yes, so that's a concern. We have to do a lot of marketing and telling people where it is. We are creating a lobby and all that, just like we have now in the police department, for people to come, do records and all that. We'll get all that information out there to them, so they'll know where to come. We're going to do everything we can to make sure people know where to go, wayfinding. We'll have, we'll put some signs on the building so people know, because it is in an industrial area. It's a good space because it's an industrial area, but it's also, it might be a little more difficult. So we have to do our job to get the wayfinding out there to all the citizens, so they know where to go. We will make, we'll have a nice lobby. They'll be able to come in, they'll be able to get their records, just like they do now. So we'll offer those same services, just in a little different location for a very short period of time.
So we'll have signage at this current location to tell people where those new locations are?
We definitely will have to put some temporary signs up when we first start doing this, because we do need to get people out there. It'll take some time for people to get used to going out there, so we'll have to do that. We're working on that plan right now. I don't have it exactly, but there definitely will be signs here, definitely while the building's still here, because, you know, we'll move out of the building, and there'll be like a month, month and a half, while they're doing internal work in the building to get it ready for demo. Once it's demoed, this whole site will be fenced, so there'll be probably signs on the fencing of telling people where to go. Generally, in these moves, is six to eight months, people know, and then they're just going there automatically. And then you've got to train them to go back to the new space, because we're going to, they're going to move back to a new building, so we'll have to do that, too. But that's all about getting it out on all of the different media sources that we have to get information out, and making sure we have phone lines and things like that to tell people where to go and all that. So we're trying to do the best we can. Will there be some people that get confused? Yes, but we're going to have enough information out there, so they can call a number, get the information, and get there.
Thank you, Colin. Any other comments by the commission? I'll open it up to public comments. Susan?
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast, 27th Way. I'm wondering why we're not seeing any maps, so everyone else in the room knows where these proposed locations are?
Until we get this finalized tonight, then we'll work on producing materials, but we needed to get the approvals and get the leases in place first.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to be footing the bill of the taxpayer along with other people thought for this whole situation, okay? I can see for the police station and City Hall, no question. But for the library, first of all, how far is the question, I'm going to ask the first one, the annex to the main library, how far apart are they? In other words, the annex is here, where's the main library going to be?
The distance between here and the main library, which is on High Ridge, that temporary site, is about 2.6 miles. So the annex is right across the street, so about 2.6 miles.
No, I'm talking the annex from the main library, once it, once you go there temporarily. How far is the annex from the, from the main?
2.6 miles.
2.6, so it is separated by 2.6. No way. I'll tell you why. Traffic up at these areas, the working, we're spending a lot of money, going to inconvenience a lot of people, and I'm worried about the kids in these two different areas and the programs. The problem is that we have a library here that's fairly new. It's fairly new. And I'm objecting only for the library to keep it here. With all the technical stuff today, there, I cannot see why, I cannot see why we cannot keep this present library and build the town center leaving this library here. I know it can be done. If we put our, if we put our heads to it, or the commission, or the engineers, or there is, this is a new building. Everything is centered here. To keep this apart for two years, no way. It's going to cost a fortune. I cannot see that. If it was an old building and dilapidated, fine. But I think that the commission is moving in the wrong direction on that. I'm for town center. There's got to be a way to construct and keep this building here, and it's got to be a way. You're spending, it's a wasted part of money to spend temporary places when we have a new building here, fairly new, everything is here, and I'm worried about the kids and the traffic. What is it? Has there been a traffic study for the, especially with kids and for people and elderly people? Has there been a, that's another question. Has there been a traffic study for this? The safety of the kids and the safety of, this is what I'm concerned about. When you have a library here, decent parking, I cannot see this. I just hope this commission revisits this. Put a, put a stopgap on this for a while, think it over. Let more people get up. I was, I helped, and I was on the library board to get this done. We worked hard. And for years, we did this. And I think this thing should be revisited. This is a, this is a major fiasco, believe me. Like, the kids, two and a half miles apart, the traffic. And I ask a question, is there any going to body tell me about a traffic study?
Okay, I'll answer the traffic question. Being that this is a temporary location, Mr. Suss, we don't necessarily need to go down the path of doing a traffic study. This is only going to be a temporary location, and there will be a new library here. The other question or concern that you brought up, which is the library annex, the library annex will be literally across the street. It's being built there with the intention of keeping the kids here. When they get out of school, when they get off their school buses, they'll be able to go right across the street and do the, all the activities that they were doing before again. So they won't have to travel to High Ridge, they won't have to go through 95. That's the whole intention of why the library annex will be located right here on Seacrest, within the Town Square vicinity. All right? So I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Waste of money that we built this place.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Suss.
It's not an answer. Really not an answer, and you guys are not doing it...
Herman, remember, I explained this in the past, that the cost to remediate the problems in the existing library structure, plus the opportunity cost or lost value of developing that land, is substantially higher than fixing the structure and leaving it there. So we, the city will definitively save millions of dollars by knocking down the structure, rebuilding it up, and allowing more development, as opposed to just having the one structure existing as it is and needing to be fixed because of water intrusion and other structural issues.
Commissioner Katz, no more comments by public audience. We'll close that. Any other commission, commission comments?
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Suss, I was here when we built the library. I was here when you started on the library board. I had the same concerns, because I said, you know, we went out and we got, you know, money and said, this is what we're going to do. We're going to add on. I asked Mr. Livergood, is this a good time to add on? And he told me, yes, no problems. And when it all came back, we have problems now. And I felt like you felt. And I said, you know, I just had to give it up. I said, well, you know, I'm not happy. I'm like you, I'm not happy. But I said, I don't want to stand in the way. This is what the majority want. I said, I'm going to back up and move with the majority. That was one reason I was holding out on the vote, because I said it was like a waste of taxpayers' money anyway.[1575.45]